I'd like to call to order the November 12th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can I please have a roll call? Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Ms. Pietrobono?
Here.
Mr. Rozovich? Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJESA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIB reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJESA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess into closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Into public session? So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due justice for all.
Linda, do we have any communications other than what's on the agenda this evening? Not that I am aware of. Okay. And number eight on our agenda is corrections to the minutes for our October 15th, 2018 meeting. We had a couple of items under personnel that need a slight adjustment. It looks like just the date is being adjusted, is that right? Looks like that's the only change. Yes. Okay. And just as a reminder for anybody here or at home or student reps, tonight is just our workshop meeting. It's our first meeting of the month, so we're not actually voting on anything, we're just going over our agenda, and then at our meeting next month, we'll be voting on these items. So tonight, everything is just for discussion. Did anybody have any questions about any of the changes to the minutes? And then number nine is the approval of the minutes from the public workshop and executive session meetings from the October 18th, 2018 meeting. Any questions on those? No concerns? All right, so number 10, our student representative report. Hello. How are you guys?
Great.
Good. Nice to see you.
So, school has been going well for all of the, for Irving and Bartle and the high school and middle school. There's not much to report on from Irving, but Bartle is holding a student council meeting on the 20th. There's an awards assembly on the 28th and an epic movie night on the 29th. I'm not totally sure what that stands for. For the high school, the Red Cross Club had a fun Halloween fundraiser, the Boo Grams. Students paid a dollar for a lollipop decorated like a ghost for their boo, and all proceeds went to the Hurricane Florence. Last week was the week of parent-teacher conferences. The parents were able to learn how their students were doing, and the teachers were able to give recommendations to the parents for student improvement. The NHS club helped out by hosting a babysitting session on each of the days.
And also for high school, this week, we're looking forward for a fall drama, The Lorraine Me Project, a play based off real-life interviews about the murder of a gay student in Wyoming. We're really excited to see how the cast will do this Friday and Saturday from 7:00 to 9:00, and Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00. And for sports, so we've had a very successful fall season. Boy soccer got Central Jersey one title with Harry Pesca scoring, like major scores in the last game. They won 3-0 against New Egypt on November 8th, and in total, they only lost one game this season. They were led by captains CJ Sanchez, George Loretis, and Eli Jacobs Perez. Girls tennis had a great season with a record of 20-1, but undefeated in their division as division champs, and they were led by the senior captains Tiffany Leong, second singles, and Alexandra Lee, first doubles. Girl soccer's our GMC Invitational Champions and won Gold Division with a record of 12-2 and 3. They were led by captains Julia Marks, Eve Schofler, and Katie Volpert. And boys' and girls' basketball and wrestling are starting soon. And as for student concerns, after Mr. Lester sent out the form that we created for students to voice their opinions and concerns, we got a great amount of responses. And so, the two, the three, well, the two main topics that we'd like to talk about today are school technology and school cleanliness/lunches. So, school technology, many of the students have said that the Wi-Fi is not working, especially in class when they have a project due or when they're trying to finish their work. The Wi-Fi cuts off, especially on the Chromebooks that we have, which don't run great and which, it's very hard to connect to the Wi-Fi at the school with the Chromebooks. So, many students feel like it would be better to have maybe new technology or to maybe fix up our Wi-Fi, something along that, along those lines, so that they can actually do their work in class and be able to do their work in school. And as for school lunches, so we mentioned this last month, but we still haven't been able to set up a full survey yet, and we're planning on doing that on service day where we have homeroom and we'll be able to talk to everyone about the school lunch concern. But many people are saying that there's very, the portions aren't great, and the quality is not consistent, and there's also, it's not enough for the students. So, yep, that's it.
Yeah, we've gotten a total of 43 responses so far. They have a wide range of complaints, but we can share the results with you if you'd like to take a look.
Great, thank you. But you're gonna, you're planning on expanding that, is that, am I hearing that correctly? So something went out, like some preliminary something went out, and then you guys are planning on expanding the survey, is that what I understood?
Basically, we have a form online for students to just sort of fill out, like, the questions are like, what's your name, what grade are you in, what topic are you concerned about, and please specify your suggestions and concerns. It's really just a general way to see how the school's doing, what students think about the school, and what students think are maybe potential problems at the school that they might want us to bring up to the board. And so, after they respond, we just sort of look through the responses and sort of filtered out some of the ones that aren't great or aren't relevant or aren't like well-thought-out. Like, an issue with chairs being uncomfortable? I'm pretty sure like one person sent 10 complaints in.
I'd like lounge chairs everywhere I go, please.
Yeah. So, yes, after a general filter, we sort of want to present the problems that students have.
Gotcha. But so, I'm sorry, so maybe I misunderstood, there's a service day where you're gonna try to get to more students, is that what you're saying?
So, the service day, what we're planning on doing is doing just a quick survey about like lunch quality and what they feel like, if they buy lunch, of course, not like students bring lunch, but like, for people who buy lunch, we want to just send out like a quick survey to their homerooms because sometimes it like, they just, it's more organized that way, and it's better to not do it like during class or anything, because many students...
Gotcha. So this will augment what you're already doing?
Yes, specifically on the topic of school lunches.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for our students this evening? Nope? Okay, thank you both. So then we will move on to Dr. Taylor's report.
Thank you. So, I've invited Mr. Benjamin and some Bartle students and their families here to be spotlighted here at the middle school. Before you know it, you'll be here, but before you get there, I'd like to introduce Mr. Benjamin to the podium, so he can say a few words about these very special young ladies. Mr. Benjamin?
I never like to start any speech without a really nice quote.
Mr. Benjamin, just speaking to the mic, so we can hear you. Thank you.
I never like to start any speech without a quote, so I thought this one was the most appropriate for this event. Happiness radiates like the fragrance from a flower and draws all good things towards you. And this was by Maharishi Yogi. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Taylor, parents, and the Highland Park community. We live in an age where our first instinct is to concern ourselves with our own feelings and thoughts, and this can be routinely invaded by the thought of, what's in it for me, or how do I benefit from this? Tonight, I'm here to talk about an experience that personifies what it means to care about others and exhibit what Nail Nodding's calls an ethic of care. Nail Nodding believes that caring is actually the foundation to morality. So, several weeks ago, two students came into my office and asked if they could post inspirational materials and drawings on the walls throughout the building. And so, me being me, I'm thinking like, okay, so I like the idea, so where would you want to put it and everything else? And so, they said, they gave me a brief idea of what they wanted to do. So, in my effort to always support the students, I instantly said yes. Kids kind of know that, you know, I'm pretty much a salty for that. So, a couple of days later, I walked around the halls throughout Bartle, and then I stumbled upon a section right outside the library, and I said, well, where did this come from? And I saw a series of student-created drawings. And these art drawings were kind of random in concept and creativity, but they all had like a similar theme. And this theme included kindness is amazing, in a world where you can be anything, be kind, persevere like a kitty, you could do it, always be yourself, and so on and so forth. So I started to laugh, and I was smiling to myself, thinking like, wow, this is really cool. So, below each of the drawings was also a sign where there's, there was this perforated group of tags, and it read, "Take a smile." So, obviously, me being me, I took a smile, and I have to say, when I ripped the perforated tag off, I actually started to smile even more, and I thought, oh, okay, I see how this actually works. So, it really had a profound effect on me. So I was inspired that our message of care and compassion resonates with our kids in ways that we could have never imagined. Tonight, I would like to acknowledge two 5th grade students for, as Gandhi says, being the change we wish to see in others, and choosing kindness and care as a means to grow, connect, and share with everyone. Bartle has been committed to growing all of our students in the most caring and nurturing way possible. Our students are always encouraged to lead by learning, empower others, appreciate our individual differences, and also do right by others. Everyone, please join me in acknowledging Nas Aklan from Ms. Lindsay Fisher's class and Evelyn Ellis from Ms. Carol Dobrofsky's class. Come on up here for representing Bartle in the finest way possible.
have homework or you just want to chill before school, you can make your way out now while we switch gears. If you want to stay, you can, but this is your time, okay? So talk to each other, figure out what you're gonna do. At the same time, Ms. Luxa, I'm going to invite you to the mic. I'd like to now shift gears and talk about the work that Ms. Luxa's been doing at the middle and high school. I've shared pictures, I've shared some narrative with the board and the community, but what Ms. Luxa will share with all of you is very detailed information about the kind of language she's using and the strategies she's using. She's going to hand out some surveys that she received from students who have experienced restorative practices led by Ms. Luxa. Do you want to walk or you want to use the podium?
I think I'll use the podium for her.
Awesome, that's fine. I'm gonna put the slideshow up there.
Okay, so, I just want to say hello, and Scott, and the board, thank you so much for inviting me to present on what we've been doing with restorative practices in the middle school and the high school. What I love about restorative practices is that it focuses on building relationships and how we maintain those relationships with each other and the staff and the students. So, in the next slide that I'm gonna show, thank you, is how we do that. So, I'm gonna start by talking about the middle school. So, in the middle school, the way we build community first is we use the Period 7 Study Hall. The Period 7 Study Hall is really used for, you know, students to catch up on their academic work or receive tutoring if they need tutoring. The way I implement community building within that is I go into the cafeteria and I invite students to participate in a community-building circle. The circles can focus on community building, goal-setting, problem-solving, anything, anything of that nature. The first circle that I did, I invited every single grade level, which was fantastic. I got such a diverse, you know, range of students. When I went to receive sign-ups for the next circle, I went into the 6th grade cafeteria and automatically I had 30 kids sign up, so I went, okay, I'm gonna do this by grade level. So now I do everything by grade level. Based on the conversations that I have with the students, that's how I prepare my next circle. So, for example, the photo that you see right there is Officer Joe attempting to complete one of my community-building activities. So, the 8th graders, the first circle that I conducted with them, they discussed, you know, kind of a fixed mindset mentality. Oh, work is impossible, it's too hard, you know, we're struggling, you know, yada, yada. So I said, that's on my 8th graders, I had you guys in 7th grade, let's go, where's the growth mindset? So, after that, I decided I'm going to run the next circle about growth mindset. So, I created this figure, they had to, they had 10 minutes to figure out how I even created it, and as they were, you know, I gave them no direction, I just said, here's the figure, create it. I recorded all of the things that they had said, which were the same things that I had just said. This is impossible, I can't do it, I give up. So I recorded all of these things, recorded all these things, and I wrote it on the board. And after the 10 minutes, I said, look at all the things that you guys said. You said, I can't do it, this is impossible. I said, this isn't the mindset you need to have as a community. You work together, you figure it out. So, that's how I did growth mindset. Just a side note, Officer Joe, it took him, I think, a little more than 10 minutes to figure that one out. But that's an example of the community building in the middle school. Dr. Taylor, if you could just click, I think, twice. After the activity, and I had explained that they need to, you know, have a growth mindset, I explained some restorative language, so I used that as like a restorative workshop for the students. So this right here is something in restorative language that we call compass of shame. So when the students experience shame, they can respond in one of these negative ways, which is one, to attack others, to attack themselves, to avoid, you know, the shame itself, or to withdraw. So I had explained that at times, we may sit in class, we may come across a challenge, and without growth mindset, we may respond in one of these ways, in one of these negative ways. At that point, I had the students identify what part of the compass of shame they tend to operate on, and, you know, turn and talk to their partner, what do you guys have in common? Oh, I withdraw too, oh, I attack others as well. And we discussed how important it is to be aware of that shame in order to, you know, be able to manage it. So the students got together, they brainstormed ways that they can, you know, manage that So, in the high school, so that's what I do in the, in the middle school, obviously, and as the middle school circles were becoming more and more popular, I found that I wanted to replicate that in the high school as best as I could. However, I, the only time I was able to do that in the high school was during the lunch period. And, you know, you know, high schoolers, they don't want to give up their lunch, they want to stay with their friends, which is absolutely understandable. So I was, you know, I decided who, who better to ask, you know, how I could accomplish, you know, community building than the teachers? So I went up to numerous teachers in the high school, I asked so many people, what do you think would be the best way to reach our students, to do a student workshop in the way that I did it in the middle school? I had stumbled upon Keisha Stefan, she's a biology teacher in the high school, and she inspired the idea of using one of the HP half-days as a, you know, day of student workshops. So that's when the idea of freshman fest came along. So, myself and Ms. Middleton, she's the 9th grade guidance counselor, we organized, we did a proposal for freshman fest, which would be just an entire day of student workshops. So, the student workshops were, one on I-statements, affective statements, so that was like a restorative circle, where Susan Doozy and Mel Chambers, they conducted that circle based off of peer mediation model. Melissa Hayes, Lisa Sanfilippo, and Katie Biddleton, they ran a circle to discuss college and what the student role is, even as a freshman, you know, what is your role in your college planning, what do you need to do, what's your role, what's our role as guidance counselors? Officer Joe came in and he discussed, you know, conflict resolution, HIB, anything, you know, of that nature. Nicole Krupsky came in and she did the same activity that I did with the 8th graders, which was the growth mindset. And the teen center, Dr. Roth and the two interns from Rutgers, they came in and they facilitated a circle on mental hygiene and the importance of that. So, that was freshman fest. In front of you, I handed out some, some surveys, I think it says exit slip or exit ticket. On that sheet, it's a two-sided sheet with some feedback on what we received from the students. I think it's really important to receive feedback from, from them because that, it's their community, so we want to make sure that everything that we do is working for them. But one quote that I loved from freshman fest is the first one that I have up on the slide, "I feel that freshman fest is really helpful. It made me have a better understanding of high school in the future. With this, I was able to feel better about myself." So that was really the goal of the day, was to celebrate the freshmen, to, you know, build community, for the students to have fun, to, you know, kind of come away from the content for a little bit and to focus on, you know, their social emotional needs. The next slide is just another, another picture of what happened within the day. So, Ms. Marr, she came, we had the freshman teachers on their time off, they, or the time that they were teaching all freshman classes, they would come in, you know, participate in the circles itself. Ms. Doozy's on the right, we had the students role-play, I-statements, and they had a great time with it. Okay, so, restorative practices, as it's, the mentality of restorative practices is 80% proactive, and that's the part that I absolutely love, right? Because it's based off of that community-building mentality. However, restorative practices does have a 20% reactive component to it that I participate in. So, I'm not a guidance counselor and I'm not a disciplinarian. Restorative practices doesn't replace discipline, it is just adding a new perspective on our approach to discipline. So I basically facilitate the conversation. When a student causes harm within the community, within the culture, I facilitate the conversation of what happened and how can we repair the harm that's been done. So, what happens with the restorative case, with the reactive cases, is the assistant principals will receive a referral from the teachers, or another student, or whatever the case may be, whatever harm was done, the assistant principal will receive a referral, and at that point, they'll reach out to me. I go and speak to the assistant principal, get, to get more information, and then I address, you know, if it's student versus, you know, a student and a student, or a student and a teacher, whoever is involved, I approach them separately, and I use the affective questions up that you see on the screen. So, it's just to facilitate a conversation, it's not to, you know, assign blame to anyone, it's, it's non-stigmatizing, just, you know, what happened, who was affected, what were you thinking, what do we need to do to make it right? It's, it's a great way to, like I said, to not stigmatize the students, to let them realize it's okay to make mistakes, the mistakes are not what defines you, it's how you respond, how you make it right is how it really defined you. And I always use that when I, when I sit down and speak to students. So, one example of a situation where I was reached out to do a reactive conversation, I had two students that got into a physical fight, and they received their discipline, they were in ISS, and I used the affective questioning with them separately. And what was interesting was that the physical fight that they had said to this assistant principal, the reasoning that they had said to this assistant principal, wound up after the questioning, not really even being why they got into the fight. There was a deeper rooted issue that had been building up between the students for like maybe two weeks. And that's the best part about, you know, separating the students, so you get that authentic response from them. So after that, we created a dialogue together with the students, they sat down and they spoke and they, they explained, you know, I just ask the questions, I just say, you know, what happened, who was affected, what were you thinking, so on and so forth. After they had the conversation, they spoke about what they needed, I explained to them the compass of shame, so I always bring it back to the language. I explained to them, okay, where were you operating on the compass of shame? What are some ways that we could avoid doing that negative behavior? And the students come up with that, come up with the solutions themselves, which is so empowering, they use their own voice to problem-solve and establish their own sense of community. They left the meeting with I-statement cards, I gave them I-statement cards, they practiced, they used it, which was great. The class that they had the physical altercation in, I always reach out back to the, the teachers who, who refer the students. So I'd sent an email to this teacher and I said, how's everything going? And then they responded back, oh, everything's great, they're getting along, this is fantastic. And then 10 minutes later, the teacher had written back to me, oh no, I spoke too soon. Okay, they're fighting, but I am impressed. So I said, well, why are you impressed? And the teacher said, they realized and recognized that they were starting to fight and it was escalating and going too far. They approached the teacher's desk and said, we're having a problem, we are fighting, we are trying not to get physical, can you please call Ms. Luxa? So, that was a little win, you know, they recognized that they were having an issue, they were self-aware of their emotions at the time. Were they perfect in fixing it on their own? No, but that's part of the process. Okay, you recognize that there's something wrong and you want to sit down and talk about it. So then, again, I facilitated another conversation, and I haven't heard anything from these two students since. So they went from having a physical altercation to, all right, well, we kind of want to talk about it now, but we need a little help, to, now I don't hear a peep from them. One of the students that was involved in that physical altercation, I haven't heard anything, you know, with the student that they had the physical altercation with, but they had approached me on one of the days I was here and said, Ms. Luxa, I think I upset one of my friends in gym, can you please prep them with the questions that you prepped us with, so we, I can sit down and explain myself, because I want them to understand, like, I didn't mean what I said. So I said, okay, no problem. So like baby steps, you know, it's, it's, it's a great experience. After every restorative conversation, whether it's a circle or whether it's, you know, just two students or a student and a teacher, I give this survey out. And in your stapled packet that I handed out, those are some samples of surveys that I've received back from the students. I think the first, the first two are a different physical altercation, but I love the way it's, the students can reflect upon themselves. Okay, so, this is what, fair process and the social discipline window, this is how This is how we, um, operate within kind of like the discipline realm. Fair process is when we look at a behavior, um, and decide that there needs to be a conversation about it. So there are three Es to fair process. Engagement, so having the, the conversation with the student, explanation, explaining the behavior that occurred and what exactly occurred that was not acceptable. And then expectation clarity, how we can work together to, to fix it. The teachers all have gone through this, um, you know, restorative practices training and we all strive to be in the with box. So there's two, um, two ways that, um, restorative practices operates. We operate based on control and support. So if you have high control and low support, you're, you're punitive. You do things to, I mean, and this relates back to like parenting too, like parenting or, you know, being a teacher, um, you do things to the kids. Low control and low support is, is neglectful and having too much support and not enough control, you do things for and you're, and you're permissive. But we strive to have high control and high support, have high expectations, but also have that nurturing component as well. So oftentimes, teachers reach out to me via email. So if I'm not getting referred, um, a student by the assistant principal for like a disciplinary action, I typically get emails from teachers reaching out to talk about, um, norm setting in their classrooms. So I just help facilitate a conversation within the classroom. One teacher had reached out to me to discuss a norm that was being broken in their classes. So we started off the year, um, you know, having maybe like two or three days of just norm setting, talking, like getting to know each other, community building, setting the expectations. The students got to, um, help, you know, set the expectations for the class. One teacher had reached out to me via email to talk about, um, an issue that she was experiencing with some students breaking the norms. So the students, um, in this one class rely heavily on Chromebooks. What was happening was the students were allowed to listen to music as they worked, um, and, and it was going fine, until one day the teacher had noticed that the work being submitted was lower than, you know, the days prior. So at that point, the teacher said, "No more, no more headphones. You broke the norm. No more headphones. Like, not allowed ever again." The students said, "All right, then we're not working." So I was like, "Oh no." So I was like, "Okay, don't worry, I'll come in tomorrow." So I set up, um, a circle where we, we, you know, talked about, okay, what was the, the big issue? So in, in speaking to the teacher, I said, "Well, what do you want the students to really like take home with? Like, what do you want them to understand?" She said, "Well, they, they broke my trust. Like, I, I don't trust them. Like, I want to trust them, but I, they broke my trust." So I said, "Okay, let's think of ways that we can earn back that trust." So, um, I met separately with the teacher, I met separately with the students. I create a circle based on the conversation that I heard, then I facilitated it, and then I follow up. So, um, the next slide has my, um, the questions that I asked. So because the topic was about trust, I made the circle based on that. The idea with this restorative circles is you want to start with low-risk questions. You just want the students to be engaged and you want them to start talking. So you start with a low-risk question that the students will all answer, and then you go to the higher-risk questions that they may be a little bit more uncomfortable answering. So the first question I asked was, "Who was a person that you trust?" Easy. "What about them makes you trust them?" Just one word. Talk about a time when you lost trust in someone. Topic's getting a little deeper. "How did it make you feel?" Gets even deeper than that. And then at that point, I directed it to the teacher and I said, "Okay, please explain to the students how you felt when you lost trust in them about them not completing their work and, and abusing the privilege that you allowed them." At that point, um, the students, you know, apologized to the teacher. The teacher apologized for just, you know, taking away the headphones. And then they worked together to, you know, the teacher didn't say, "Okay, this is what we're going to do." The students had to come up with it. The students came up with the solutions. The students came up with the culture and the community and how they were going to operate and participate within that. So this is how I track my progress. So after the conversation, I felt very confident, the teacher felt very confident, the students were happy. I think at the end of it, they were talking about like their favorite childhood experience, um, because they had five minutes left on the bell, so they got to know each other a little bit better. But then I always, always, always send out an email, ask for feedback. I love feedback from, from the teachers and from the students, so that, I mean, that's how I, I adjust myself, my, the way I operate. So this is a response from that teacher. So everything is going well. The students had been responding well to the class. They have been doing their independent work every day and as agreed, they can listen to music in the last five minutes of class. And I love this last sentence here. "Surprisingly, most days they choose not to listen to music." Which is incredible. Okay, so this is, so beyond the students and the staff working together and creating their own community, we have, um, a new group that emerged in the middle school. They call themselves the Social Emotional Pranksters. So this is a team of teachers and, um, some help with the cheerleaders from the cheer club, that focuses on building community by playing harmless pranks on the staff. So after school, they play the harmless pranks on the staff and they make it personal. They typically do, um, something that's based on their content or based on like birthdays or, or whatever. That's their Twitter, if you want to follow them on Twitter. Some examples of the group on the next slide is, um, this is what they did to the physical education, uh, teachers. So they took tons of balloons, filled it in their office, and on each balloon, they wrote something positive about their teachers. "We love you because you're a great coach. You're inspiring. You know, you help us all the time." The next one is, um, for birthdays. So on the left, um, Principal O has this quote, which is, "May the light of education shine upon you." So the Social Emotional Pranksters put light bulbs all around her office and it was around her birthday. So that was like her birthday surprise. The department levels and holidays, so, um, the ones, the two, the center and the one on the right is, um, you know, English, like an English joke. It's noted that you're a great teacher and they put posts all over their board. The one on the left is one that I absolutely love that we did last year. It's Halloween booze. So you send candy to maybe like five teachers and then their role is to boo someone else who, who didn't get candy yet. So it's really interactive, like it, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great activity. And the next step, so, um, restorative practices, like I said, I love getting feedback and I love learning from, you know, freshman fest and, and the circles that we do. My next step, something that I have a goal for, is to find a way to introduce it to families in the district. I want to have more community and staff events where the staff can come, maybe like a movie night, you know, meet the parents on, on not just a parent-teacher conference level. And my, also my next step is to have a conversation with, um, the other lower-grade schools. Because I want to make sure that, um, everything that they're doing in the lower grades is easily transitioned to the higher grades. Because I've been in the middle school and the high school, so that, that transition is easy for me. But I want to make sure it's a smooth transition for our fifth graders too. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions or comments or?
Anybody? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is wonderful.
It's just delightful to hear about. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you too. Did you have a question, Anne?
No, I didn't have a question.
I don't think your mic is on, Monique. Just see if it's switched on.
Oh yeah, I wasn't close enough, probably. Thank you. That was a really wonderful presentation and I like the snippets of the students' actual responses and the way that you also feat, get feedback from the teachers on an ongoing basis is so important. Um, I'm wondering if you have had a chance to kind of gauge how students who have been participating in the circle feel about, um, you know, ISS and out-of-school suspension and how that sort of, um, how do they fit that in with what they're also doing on the restorative practice end? You know, how are they coming to terms with the fact that there's still, you know, some actual consequences that may be punitive in nature, um, but yet they also are experiencing restorative practices? Are you getting a sense that they're under, that they're processing this well and they're feeling like they understand why they're both right and in this process of discipline?
Right. I do feel like the restorative component is making the students feel supported. So like if we're talking about social discipline window, um, there's that area of control and support, right? The ISS section is that control. You had this, you performed this action and now you have this consequence. The restorative component is that support. So with it together, typically during ISS, I, I use that period, that time period as the reflection period. I make sure I go to that student. And sometimes, even within ISS, sometimes they're not ready to speak. So I, sometimes I go three times to, within a day. And the students will say, "Why are you here three times? Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to talk." And I'm like, "But I care about you and I want, I want to see you do, do this right." Like, "I've known you since you were in seventh grade." You know, I, I have a great relationship with most of the students. I, I try to make myself, like I said, visible in the hallway, um, all the time. I say hello to every single student. And I do that because I, I absolutely love the students of Highland Park. But I also do that because I don't want them to just see, the first time that they see me as something that's reactive. I want them to have an understanding that, you know, I'll say, "Hi, how are you?" But I think they enjoy that response. Like the, the restorative survey, there's, there's two. The first one in the stapled packet, those students were, it's a long process, like the restorative component especially and something reactive is such a long process. Because I have to speak to the teachers, I have to speak to the administrators, I have to speak to parents sometimes, um, and organize all of that together. That, the first two surveys, those students were in ISS. A good majority of the ISS was the time to speak about the incident, um, which, which they understood, you know, the importance of it. And then what I love in the surveys is like, like the first two surveys were a set of students that physically fought. And then by, and, and it's nerve-wracking to, to sit next to the person that you just fought. But they felt really comfortable and, and they, I write down all the notes from the questions, so like I'll ask them the restorative questions and I write down everything that they say, just independently by themselves. And then when they get into the meeting, sometimes nerves get really high and they forget what they wanted to say and, and whatever. So I write it all down when they're com, in a comfortable state. So when they get to speaking, I can go, "Hey buddy, you missed this part." And they'll go, "Oh, yeah." Or sometimes they'll give me like the eyes and it'll be like, "Ms. Luxa, you say it." And I'll be like, "Okay, I got you." So, and then I'll say it for them. So I think it's a very comfortable process. Because students aren't really used to dealing with their problems, their conflicts together, like on their own. So it's a, it's a great practice. I, I get a lot of students that, um, that appreciate it.
I think it'll also be really interesting to, to track the kids. I don't know how much data collection you're doing, to see the kids, because I'm sure you get some kids where they don't want to participate at all. And to see how many, um, you know, and we were just talking about this a little bit in closed session, because in closed, we talk about discipline and HIB and, you know, these terms that we throw around, like, "Repute offenders" and, you know. You know, how many of those kids go on to continue to exhibit the same behaviors versus the kids who do participate in the reactive circles? And do, do we or do we not see those kids continue with the same behaviors? Or do those behaviors ameliorate?
So I just wanted to say one thing and then I'll give it back to Ms. Luxa. We have two interns from Maurice Elias's lab working with us and we have tasked them, they spend five hours a week in our schools, um, to do data collection on the social emotional decision-making lab at Bartle and to work with Ms. Luxa and conduct that research. They're doctoral students, so we're going to.
That would be fantastic to look at at the end of the year to see, and any help you can give us and the principals. And I'm thinking, maybe at some point, we all need to sit down together and have some conversation, like district-wide, about different terms that we can use. You know, sometimes these terms that we use and throw around really, I think, colors how we see students. So I, I, we, I know, I think, I speak for the board, would be very open to other, other language that we can use when we're doing this kind of, doing this kind of reporting and looking at this kind of reporting and asking our, you know, building-level administrators to do this kind of reporting, so.
Absolutely. I 100% agree on that.
Anybody else have any questions? Kudos?
I just want to say that, I mean, you know, this is a huge board priority and I for one am thrilled to hear about all the stuff you're doing. You're just jumping right into it. And I know you'll keep Scott and the principals informed if you need additional resources. We do, you know, worry about you getting burned out doing all of this yourself. So, you know, I know you'll be, you'll be proactive about asking for what you need.
100%. 100%.
Okay.
Yes.
I have to say, Ms. Luxa, you're like one of those rock star teachers when you walk down the hall, you're like, students just, just are glued to you. I mentioned in closed session, we were talking about this, the discipline study group meeting and the post-meeting, we had, I think, all five students, yeah, all five students just stuck around another hour with you in my waiting room. And I left you guys alone. I just fed them candy because I didn't want to be, you know, nobody wants a superintendent, you know, sitting in a convo. They wanted to be there with you. You know, you're, um, as a superintendent, I don't get to make many decisions that directly have a positive impact on culture, the program, except in hiring. And you're one of my prideful, my prideful moments. I actually hired Ms. Luxa online. I hired her via FaceTime. As Kate May over the summer and the only way we could get that last round interview in was FaceTime.
Yes.
I'll never forget that.
And I remember seeing your dog and I was like, "Oh my gosh, this is a great district. I love this."
We were building community back then. So Ms. Luxa, thanks for coming out.
100%. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that concludes my report.
All righty. Excellent. Okay, so we will move on to our committee reports. Michelle's not here for curriculum, but Monique, I understand you'll be pinch-hit for her.
Okay, we met November 5th in the superintendent's office. First item we discussed was a Zone 16 Center slash high school resolution. Then this new resolution reflects the high school leadership team and guidance counselors' desire to be better connected to the Zone 16 Center, given the work that both, um, entities do with our high school students during their out-of-school time and in-school time on the district's end. The partnership referred to in the resolution still needs to be fleshed out, but generally speaking, it will include sharing of programs and special events, such as, um, the college prep night that was recently held there in coordination with POSOC and other activities that would benefit the students. The, they also discussed in the high school, uh, I'm sorry, high school administration and Mrs. Asamoah are also discussing with Ashton Burrell, who is the Zone 16 Center coordinator, the possibility of putting into place an agreement that would allow the high school with parental consent to share some student information with Ashton that might be pertinent to the work that he does with students who attend the teen center. One example that was given, just, um, to kind of help us sort of understand where this would be applicable, um, one example that was given was that if a student is presenting with particular challenges while at the teen center, um, that could be connected to a situation at school, um, such as, such as a disagreement with another student, Ashton, Ashton could request information about the student from the high school. That could be helpful as he tries to work with, um, the student involved. Oh, my cursor keeps going down, I'm sorry, too far. This information sharing agreement is not currently included in the new resolution. If it is to be formalized, it would require an acknowledgement added to the Zone 6 application stating that the school will share information only upon the consent of the parent. So I think the idea is that there would be, um, an actual parental consent, um, section in the Zone 6 Center, um, application form, that would allow the parent to give this blanketed consent. And we did discuss some concerns about, um, this particular, um, policy, which is not yet included in the application, um, so we would like to have further discussions about whether it's something that we really want the district to, or the high school in particular to start, um, doing in terms of giving access to our students' information, um, to this township entity, in the Zone 16 Center. Why do you keep, I'm sorry, I'm having problems with my mouse here or my keypad. Okay. Skipped. The second item we discussed was a new high school elective that's being considered. Scott shared a curriculum guide for a year-long course entitled, "The African-American Experience." And it's written by one of his college graduate students that are, and is currently being taught at Piscataway High School. Since the meeting, I mean, at the time of the meeting, I know the- taught at Piscataway High School. Since the meeting, I mean, at the time of the meeting, I know the curriculum was being reviewed, and Ms. Fittipaldi and Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Golden Cooper were talking about possibly running this as a 2019, 2020 course. And I think now we do have permission to replicate this program, and Rebecca has already begun working with Ms. Golden Cooper and Mr. Lassiter to include this class as an elective for next school year in the high school. We also discussed the humanities curricula update. Unit descriptions for K to 5 have been updated. 6th to 12th grade standard or curricula have been updated to reflect the new state standards, which replace the core curriculum state standards. We also discussed the structured learning experience, or SLE, and community-based instruction curricula. Both of these are for our students in the GLOW program who engage in work studies. The SLE program focuses more on in-school work projects, such as office paper filing, flyer folding, et cetera. The CBI program has the students working off-site in stores and community organizations. And additionally, I'm just going to scroll down here, Scott did provide brief synopses, a synopsis of the changes that were made to curricula being, being proposed for board adoption. Note that most of the decisions made to the ELA and Social Studies curricula reflect the need for more clearer and measurable formative and summative assessments. They also did not previously contain viable and usable learning plans that reflected differentiation. So in K through 5 ELA, the writing curriculum was revised to include learning plans that reflected differentiation strategies using a workshop model. And it was also revised and updated, the formative and summative assessments were also revised and updated. For 9th through 12th grade ELA, updated text sets were also completed and revised and updated formative, summative assessments as well. For Chinese 1 and 2, those are two new classes for the high school that were added. AP Government and Politics, AP Language and Composition, AP Literature and Composition, Language of Film, Language of Film, they were written to replace outdated curricula and reflect the College Board's new units and changes to these courses. They were also written to replace outdated curriculum. So those are the curriculum updates that we discussed. Then we moved on to talking about item 5 here, an update on the review of demographic breakdown of our school programs, following up on a conversation that we had in our previous board meeting, to ascertain whether students who were bused to school were having difficulty participating in after-school activities due to transportation or lack of transportation. So, Mr. Lassiter is still in the process of compiling the data on after-school participation, but we did discuss the possibility of being able to secure a mini-bus that would hold about 18 kids. Scott said it would probably cost around $20,000 for the entire year to be able to rent that bus. But we discussed, you know, the, the cost-benefit analysis, which we would have a better sense of once we get that data on after-school participation. The demographics of Cedar Lane students we talked about, and the current high school demographics. High school breakdown currently, we have about 22% of Asian population, 11% African-American, 20% Hispanic, 41% white, and 6% multiracial. Another possibility that I know is being looked into for this after-school transportation piece would be to have a shared services van with the borough. That would provide access for kids who may be bussed in from Cedar Lane to be able to stay after school and be bussed home through that shared services bus. That would also service kids who stay after for the Zone 16 Center. So they're looking at a collaborative busing arrangement there, which is really great. We also discussed the middle school pipeline to high school honors and AP programs, an update there. Mrs. Golden Cooper, high school assistant principal, and Mrs. Middleton, the new middle school guidance counselor, are designing a system to increase participation in high school honors and AP classes among underrepresented students, starting in the middle school. The plan is to identify students that have strong scores on individual assessments and the MAP test, and then follow up with those who, despite doing well on those types of assessment tools, are not selected for honors classes. Guidance would encourage these students to consider trying a more challenging class. Whether or not a teacher recommendation will be required is still being determined, but there are, there will be some probing of teachers that may need to be done to determine what other factors could be getting in the way of them making recommendations for students to move up to honors and AP courses. In light of the social aspects involved in making an academic leap, we also discussed the possibility of looking into establishing a cohort approach that would involve having a small group of students taking the jump together into a more challenging course, so to speak, so that they can be of support and encouragement to each other in that process. I know Scott agrees that it's worthwhile to do some research on this kind of cohort model and then have a follow-up discussion with it, about it, with Ms. Golden Cooper and Ms. Middleton. And let's see if there was another update there. Because Scott did provide a little bit more information subsequent to our meeting, so I'm going to go ahead and read from the information that he did add about this topic. He did say that Guidance Counselor Katie Middleton did meet with teachers regarding honors and AP classes and discussed the waiver and recommendation processes. Through these discussions, she found that there is a need for reevaluation of the process in which we identify students who are appropriate for the honors challenge entering high school and recognize the work that we'll have to do to foster greater awareness about the programs as a whole. Katie will be putting together a panel to collect more information about high school scheduling. That will include 8th grade students, the high school assistant principal, a 9th grade teacher, a 9th grade student, and a 12th grade student. She also intends to develop a formal transition plan for 8th grade students that will make the recommendation process for honors and advanced placement classes more effective. So we look forward to that process being implemented. So moving on to the next topic we talked about was the digital divide, homework accessibility gap, again, following up on prior board conversations. A technology access service, survey will be sent out to families in the next few weeks, and this is a massive survey that we did have a chance to kind of look at, very comprehensive, a survey that I think is generated from NC State University. It will enable each of the schools to kind of determine the extent of computer and internet access each of the students have in their home and in their communities. So we're looking forward to getting that data and helping us, letting that allow us to make decisions about what we need and where the needs are in terms of technology. That is the end of our discussion notes, and I just want to make sure that I've read all of the updates that Scott provided since our meeting, and I think I did. Thank you.
Awesome. And can you go through the agenda with us, too?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just, brief overview, there's only a few.
So, okay, so the resolution to approve field trip requests as per the attached, do I need to actually read this? No. Okay. Three, the resolution to establish a partnership between the Highland Park Public Schools and the Highland Park Zone 16 Center. That's stated here, which, do I need to read that resolution? No, we're just, okay. And then number four, it gets into the resolution to approve the curriculum for the 2018, 2019 school year. Five, the resolution to approve the university graduate students for teaching internships and junior practicum observations. There's only one there. And that's it?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for?
I have one question. I can't, I can't remember where it came up, maybe Anne brought it up in personnel or something, that when it come, that there had been some issues, I guess, in the high school with scheduling and trying to, when some students might have wanted to try, like, the honors options, but then it conflicted with their schedules if they were in like a lower, you know, level of something else. Was there any discussion about that?
Yeah, we didn't have a deep discussion about that, but I feel like that came up very kind of on the margin of our conversation, but I think it is definitely on the radar, based on what we said. Maybe when Scott comes in, he may have something to add to that, but I know that that is something that the guidance department is mindful of. Scheduling is a part of the process of opening up access.
Yeah, and I think there's kind of like overarching schedule-
Yeah.
-concerns that are looming with the high school, that the high school-
If there's more sections open, maybe.
Schedule has gotten kind of complicated and convoluted, so I think, I think there's active searching for solutions to that.
And one thing I do just want to say to just add, I guess, my comment or concerns to the, to the possible policy that we're considering in terms of this agreement between the Zone 16 Center and the high school, and the high school sharing information about students. You know, I'm the one that clearly expressed concerns about it in the meeting, and I just don't feel comfortable with us getting into a relationship like that with a, with the teen center, although I do completely understand the, the benefit for Ashton, who is very engaged with the high school students who do attend the teen center and being supportive of them and mentoring them, and his desire to have as much information as possible about situations they may be, you know, going through at school that may be helpful in his work with them. I just feel like there could be some implications that we may not even foresee now if we open up that sort of relationship. So I just want us to be thinking about that, and I don't know how the process goes from here in terms of where they are and how they're going to get to that decision, right? The administration with whether that's going to be part of the resolution, but I think it should be a part of our conversation as a, as a board, as to whether or not that's something that we feel we want the high school to begin to engage in, in terms of that sort of exchange of information, even with a consent, because the idea is that the parent would be giving a blanket consent in the application that they sign when their student, you know, agrees to participate in Zone 6. So it's a blanket permission. So at any point during that, their child's participation in the Zone Center, Ashton can give a call to the school and say, "Hey, I have permission from a parent. I wanted to know some information about XYZ student, and, you know, he seems to be, or she seems to be going through a situation. Can you tell me what's been going on with her school, with his or her school day, or their school day?" So, I just, I just don't feel so good about that. I just think-
It has a slippery slope, kind of.
It does have a slippery slope feel to it.
And I know that, excuse me, the teen center, Zone 6, I mean, was designed in part, I can't turn this on. There was some suggestion when, when Zone 6 was developed, that there would be a relationship with the police to try to, you know, foster a good relationship between police and community, and I think we need to be careful about giving blanket authorizations to Zone 6 to get information for the school.
Right. And the district already has a relationship with Ashton, and Ashton already has a relationship with a lot of the students and families. And, you know, I think this board and Ashton is one combination, but you could potentially have another director there and a different board, and those kind of permissions can then be, can go in much different directions. So, it's, yeah.
I had a semi-related point, Scott. I, I feel like we do talk about Ashton quite a lot because of the immense contributions he makes to our community. And I know this is not something we can discuss at the board table, but just from my personal, my personal feeling is, I, I hope that we will consider, and maybe we already have, providing Ashton with some kind of like paid position other than, you know, he's got a helper position at after-school at Bartle. I don't know that he also has a paid position-
Not this year.
Oh, not this year?
But last year.
Last year he did.
He had a position not just at Bartle, but somewhere else?
No, no, last year he was at Bartle, after school.
What I'm trying to say is, he does a lot more for us than act as a helper at Bartle after-school, which, which is a great thing that he does.
Oh, sure. He's got the mentorship program.
He's got the mentorship program. And I wonder if it, I do feel that, like, we are often inclined to say, like, "Well, let's, let's refer this kid to Ashton. Let's, let's see if Ashton can give us some suggestions." And I hope that the administration will consider at some point, possibly-
Hire Ashton?
Yes. Or at least, you know, giving him some remuneration.
He's a major asset to us, there's no doubt.
Yeah, and we depend on him quite a lot. So, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, I think we should do something.
He's going for his administration degree.
I know, yeah.
I'm not sure if you're aware of that. Yeah, he's going for a doctorate in admin.
Yeah. So I'd like us to consider that, or the administration to consider that. One other question, what was it? Oh, around the digital divide. I, this is, this is sort of a clerical note, but I noticed in our board goals, as they appear in this week's agenda, that line that we had in there about providing all students with access to educational resources necessary to succeed in school, including technology, that somehow got dropped.
Did they get updated for this agenda? Actually, I didn't check-
Confused. Can you go back and tell me again?
Sure. At the, you know, at the end of every agenda, we have our goals.
Did the goals get updated?
Oh, forgive me. Yeah, these are the latest goals.
Well, yes, but, so what I'm saying is, yes, they're mostly updated, but the one provision is missing about the digital divide. We had a line, if you look in the draft board goals that we came up with, about providing all students with access to the materials they need to succeed in the school day, including technology. Let me see if-
I'll have Susan go back to the history of our changes-
Yeah.
And look for that language in particular, and then restore it. Maybe she got the wrong version.
I think the one sentence just got dropped out.
Okay.
Unless, I, I know I missed a meeting at some point, but I don't think the board probably voted to, you know, get rid of that sentence. I think it's just a clerical error. There's another sentence, too, which says about detracking. We're going to try to, you know, research and, you know, have discussions about more diverse classrooms in an effort to eliminate, and then the sentence stops. So that's just, that's not, that's not like a big board, not a big board issue, but I just, the digital divide thing really does need to be in there. I mean, at some point, speaking of the digital divide, I, I was thinking about this tonight as I went through with my sixth grader, the 15 websites that he has to check every day, and some of which he has not been checking, and accordingly does not know about the resources provided in science, for example. So we had to go down, sit, and this is what you have to do every day, have to look at these websites. And it just, I, I guess I would like at some point to maybe have an update on how teachers are handling the process of ensuring that all students in their classes have regular access to check-outable computers. I mean, I know that that was-
I was going to build questions into the survey. I'm going to conduct a separate survey for teachers. Can we go through that route?
We can, but I thought we were also going to have a sort of a "stop the bleeding" provision, where teachers were going to make sure when they have electronic online resources, that they made it clear to the class that there are computers to be checked out. I mean, I'm not in the building, but I, I have heard that at least in some instances, that announcement is not being made, at least not being made clearly. Perhaps it's being made in some way that I'm not aware of.
I'll do a better job following up on that.
Okay. Because I really, you know, my kid literally had 10 websites to check, you know, some of those were subsets of Google Classroom, and it was pretty amazing how few he had checked. And this is a kid with access to, you know, a smartphone. So I, I feel really nervous about that as we do all this other work to try to promote equity. We're basically putting a lot of school online. Thank you.
A lot.
A lot.
Can I just ask a question about that, just to follow up? Is the policy still that teachers are not supposed to be, well, clearly they are, but, so the idea is they can still now assign homework that requires-
They should not.
What? They should not?
Teachers should not be assigning homework that needs to be done at home on a computer.
Oh, oh, that's-
I thought it was without also-
That directive never changed.
That never changed. That directive has not, has not changed.
Well, that's not being enforced. I thought you said that, that they were allowed to assign such homework, but they would have to make sure the class was aware that computers could be checked out.
I've been, I've been clearly discouraging people from, I'm keeping us in that place until we don't, until we have a better handle on what we can do for the kids who don't have access.
Regrettably, in the middle school, every single class, okay, and I'll just say one more time, that in the middle school, every single class-
It's been very difficult.
Has tons and tons of online stuff. Not all homework, but some of it is like resources.
And a lot of it is studying.
Yes, yes, studying.
And I thought we had this discussion, that the idea was that we have enough loners available, right? So that if there are a few students in a class, the teacher would find out who would need it and need a loner and-
I'm not 100% sure we have enough loner equipment to provide access to all of our students.
We had a whole discussion.
I mean, we have loner equipment, but I don't know if we have enough-
Yeah. I guess I didn't realize that was in action, the policy on, like, not being able to assign homework using, like, technology and stuff. I, I don't really have a teacher that does-
It's something which I direct the teachers to back off doing, because we were concerned that people didn't have access.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely understand, but that's very rarely practiced in the high school. Like, almost all of my teachers put their homework on Google Classroom.
Same in the middle school. And I, I'm not hearing, I mean, I really, I feel like I'm misremembering our last conversation where we talked about loners and how it was really difficult to discourage teachers from, you know, making use of these resources that are out there, understandably. And so they were going to be directed to make sure, through whatever discreet means they have, that every student in the class either had access at home or could check out a loner computer, and that was going to be the sort of intermediate thing. Because, I mean, by the time the survey goes out in a couple of weeks, you know, the first marking period's already over. I can't imagine what it would be like for a student who didn't have online access at home. I mean, it's, it's a struggle for me to keep up with it. I hadn't been keeping up with it until I realized my kid had not.
Starting tomorrow, I'm going to put together as much information as I can, send to the full board about what, what we, what we, what kind of infrastructure- full board about what we, what we, what kind of infrastructure we have to help students access technology at home, period. I know you've been looking for that and I'll start working on that tomorrow.
But I thought that, so the teachers are not making these announcements about loners? I thought we had agreed that they would be doing that.
They're not explicitly, at least, but for me, in many of my classes, in like the first few days of class when they're assigning a homework online, they usually ask like this, everyone have access to a digital device at home. And no one really responds, so I guess they never say that there's like loners, so like they don't actually need it, I guess, for like the people in my classes, at least. But like, I guess if teachers are, do that and then the students like do say they need something, then the teacher should be able to tell them that there's loners.
I think that the students should not be called upon to raise their hand and say, I don't have a computer at home, I'm pretty poor. You know, you need to do, more needs to be done.
A discreet sort of.
I mean, nobody's going to raise their hand for that question.
I mean, I feel like they can go to the teacher privately or something like that just to say like, I don't, I'm not able to do my work, so like can I, is there an alternate option? Can I have a printout or something like that? And you could probably be able to direct them to like a loner device.
That's true, I agree, but I think the student, it shouldn't be on the student to figure out how they're going to physically do their homework. And I think the student, there needs to be some universal design baked in here where our homework is immediately presented as available for all students. I say that because we're trying to draw in students who have been left behind, right? And now we're asking these students, you know, not only, you know, keep up with everything, but also like make sure you go to your teacher privately and explain that you don't have a computer and so you can't do the homework. That's not acceptable to me.
And that's what I'm finding with a lot of the online work that's being assigned does require students to be this kind of proactive.
Yes.
That other work doesn't, you know? It does really, and just silly things like remembering passwords or, do you know what I mean? It's like this kind of additional kind of organization and togetherness that a lot of kids.
Especially sixth graders.
Don't have, you know? So it's.
Would this be part of like Sixth Grade Academy?
Which is offered at the end of the year for many students, such as mine, you know, inevitably perhaps. But I know my sixth grader, who's probably watching this right now, has so many websites he has to keep track of. It's a struggle and I wasn't helping him until recently. And then I found it kind of overwhelming.
And it requires agileness with the computer.
Yes.
It's not just, I have a computer at home.
Right.
But, or I take one home, but I'm used to using it and I know how to use it. So I see that with my grandkids.
Right, it won't take me three hours to figure out how to get on Classroom and then get on Quizlet and then get on that other.
Or I have three siblings and how are me and my three siblings all going to fight over the one computer? It's, I mean, there's a lot there. So we won't take up the whole curriculum committee report going over to get.
No, but just one last thing, because I know Ruth mentioned this, which I didn't think about. Even if we do send home the loner, right, potentially, do they have like the Wi-Fi hotspot that comes with them and that's all? Okay.
Okay, but that's not happening? I mean, I just want to make clear that I thought our last discussion.
Well, I think that's going to get us more information, so we'll find out what is happening.
Yes. I'll work on that tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to move on to finance. Mark?
Yes, thank you.
Could you give us the finance report?
It's very hard to always, always follow the curriculum report where all of these interesting things.
Well, we have some interesting things this time.
No, no, no.
We do, we do.
It's all these numbers.
Oh, you know what? I do have a question, but I'll wait for new business or something about curriculum. I feel like we need to get moving. Maybe, can I just put a marker in it for now? I'm sorry, I interrupted your mark.
No, go ahead.
Can I just put a marker in this for future discussion?
On what?
On curriculum. I had another question that I forgot about.
Oh, go ahead then.
Do it now, do it now.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I don't need to get us involved in a huge discussion about this. It's, I was looking through the kindergarten curriculum guide for ELA and of course, I am not a curriculum expert and I find the guides, you know, very confusing and I don't know what all the terms mean, but I would like to find out at some point how the play-based curriculum is built into that. I mean, it seemed like when, you know, under suggested activities for teachers, it was very much provide mentor text, post-anchor skills. So I would love to hear more at some point from Scott or, you know, the administration about how those activities interact with the play-based curriculum.
Can we get a presentation at some point about how the play-based curriculum is going to be worked back into pre-K and kindergarten curriculum?
I'm going to talk about that in, I'm going to talk about that in finance.
Ah, sorry.
Because we, no, no, because there is an issue, there is an issue here with play-based curriculum, which is in the state guidelines for kindergarten play-based curriculum.
If we could mark that down. This is still one of those things that, fine, like, ugh.
Yes, yes.
This makes me so upset, like this was, this was, this was our curriculum when my kid started here, you know? I mean, that was what made you feel so good as a parent coming in was, you know, we had this creative curriculum and, you know, you knew that your babies were going to a school where they weren't going to be, you know, we weren't going to have a drilling kill kind of environment for five-year-olds, so.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that, Mark.
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, and now, Mark.
On to, yes, on to, on to the curriculum committee. So the curriculum committee met at 5:30 this evening.
Finance.
Oh, sorry, finance committee.
It's so tempting, I know.
The finance committee, I guess that's wishful thinking. The finance committee met at 5:30 this evening and reviewed the agenda. We also discussed shared services with the Borough, including the after-school busing. One of the things about busing is how expensive it is and also how difficult, even if, even if we have the money to pay the $20,000, it's become increasingly difficult to get the buses with the drivers who have the proper certification. The Borough has a bus and has drivers, so we're discussing how to work with them to extend the day so that we can do that busing. We also discussed some facilities issues, particularly the turf field out here, just in back at the athletic field, which is going to need replacement and how to do that as a shared service between the Borough and the, and the school board and using some county or grant money, I think through the county.
Oh, that'd be great.
The auditors will be returning to the district this Wednesday to finalize our audit report. We reviewed the enrollment report and the enrollment has stayed very steady from last year. I think we're one student different in numbers from a year ago, 1624 versus 1625. I think this is good news. If it goes down too much, we can't provide program. We don't have the money to provide program if the enrollment is too small. If it goes up too much, we have facilities issues. So numbers in the 16, 1700 ranges are good. Numbers in the 1400s, which when my kids were in the schools, they were going to the 1400s and 1300s, it became very hard to run programs. When you have 2,100 students, we don't have the facilities or we have them, but they've become very, very tight. So these numbers are good and hopefully they stay consistent with that or rise just slightly. We reviewed the list of unforeseen revenues and expenses for this school year and we've gotten a bonus. We've gotten, along with other districts in the state, a multi-hundred thousand dollar savings on our medical and prescription premiums. So the good news is we had a windfall, the bad news is we shouldn't spend it all at once because we were running quite a lot behind. We've had a lot of unforeseen expenses, particularly in out-of-district special ed placements. With this extra money that's not going to be spent for medical insurance premiums, we will be slightly ahead of our projections, which is really good. At this point of time of year, we're starting to know where we are and where we'll be and we really need to not fall behind. It's very bad and we can't get to the end of the year without having some small surplus. And then the last item I brought up very briefly is that Dr. Taylor has been in discussions with Megan over at the Irving School on the play materials. And so as it turns out, four or five years ago, under the previous administration, when the play-based primary school was changed into more of an academic primary school, the play materials disappeared. We don't have blocks, we don't have easels, for the most part, in most of the classrooms. And Megan is now doing a study of what do we have, what do we need, what does it cost? It doesn't cost much, by the way. A full set of blocks appropriate for kindergarten costs $300 or $400. So we're talking about hundreds or very low thousands of dollars to put appropriate play materials into those classrooms. This is very important to the board, both from the curriculum perspective and getting our youngest students started the right way. So work is going on there. The finance committee looks forward to getting a proposal from the Irving School and taking that proposal, giving it to the whole board, hopefully not more than $2,000 or $3,000, get the play material into the rooms, those rooms to match the play curriculum and do more play in those rooms as opposed to expecting kindergarteners to be reading, first graders to be reading and writing essays, inappropriate. So, you know, hopefully that will, will make a difference. And I think I covered everything in the finance meeting. I'll have written minutes later this week for everyone, certainly before the end of the week. So for our, for our agenda, item two are our usual bill lists, the general bill list, athletic bill list and cafeteria bill list. Item three is a resolution to, for Darcy to attend the NJSBA delegate assembly with some small costs associated. Item four is a resolution to approve the travel and expense, related expense reimbursement reports that are attached to the agenda. Item five is a resolution approving contractors for professional services. This is a change in the person acting as the carpenter for the fall drama, from Robert Graham to Matthew Ludden, and staff development training by Laura Rigoli on December 10th. Item six through nine are out-of-district placements. So six is a, one new out-of-district placement. This is typically a special education placement. Items, next item is a placement at Middlesex County Community College for one class. The next item is one displaced student attending school in North Brunswick. The next is one bedside instruction at a partial hospitalization center. And the last one is a placement as a result of a settlement agreement. This is an old placement, this settlement was made several years ago, so it's not new budget or anything like that. Item 11 is a resolution to accept $1,144 in extraordinary aid, of additional extraordinary aid, which was a small increase that we were given. Item 12 simply approves appropriation to the pension account, contribution accounts, account. And then items 13 and 14 are receiving quotes and awarding a contract to make roof repairs above the high school girls locker room and the middle school, high school media center. And that is it.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mark? Any other finance items on the agenda or in the report? No? I will just say quickly, since it's under the finance thing, that typically by now I would have resolutions for you guys to look at for the delegate assembly. There were none. This, so the delegate assembly meets twice a year, for this delegate assembly in November. Apparently no resolutions were submitted by any district across the state, which is very strange. So in lieu of the delegates voting on resolutions, the New Jersey School Boards Association has invited Senator Stephen Sweeney to come and speak with the delegates, so that should be absolutely fascinating.
Interesting.
So far, what I understand, Senator Sweeney is there to do is what he did at the workshop, which we'll talk about a little bit later, which is to push his path to progress. So if no one has checked out Senator Sweeney's path to progress, you can go onto the interwebs and find www.pastoprogressnj.org and find out what our dear Senate president is up to, because he has a lot in store, in store for our schools and our educational professionals and pensions and benefits and, oh my, oh my, he has a long list of things that he would like to do. One of the most immediate, I think, is the pension and benefit stuff, which it's still not 100% clear to me exactly what it is he plans on proposing. And then the other piece that he seems very determined to push forward, which is I think why he's really coming to New Jersey, to the New Jersey School Boards Association, delegate assembly is pushing his idea of regionalization. That's his real big push right now for any K5, K8 districts that are in regional relationships with high schools to consolidate. And then in addition to that, he would like to see two county-wide school districts. So his ultimate goal would be county-wide districts in the state.
Do we have any county-wide districts?
No, but some states only have county-wide districts. So he's seeing this as this incredible cost savings because instead of us having, you know, Scott and New Brunswick having Aubrey Johnson and East Brunswick having Victor Valeski, we'd all have one superintendent and there'd just be one board and there'd just be, you know, one Linda. And so, and of course, then you have layers of staff and all this, but this is what he's.
There is only one Linda.
There is.
There's just one.
That's true. But this is, this is what he's pushing towards. And some of the folks that I've spoken to in South Jersey are very concerned that, you know, his push for these regional districts is going to come down in South Jersey where he's going to try to push these smaller K5s and K8s that go to regional high schools, not only together, but then county. So, so we all need to keep our ears open and our antenna up and see where this is going to go. And I'll even say this on camera, I am a little disappointed that the New Jersey School Boards Association is giving this kind of access, giving the Senate president this kind of access to school board members statewide. And something was even put out in their publication that they put out saying, you know, great demand to come see Senator Sweeney. When, when I signed up, I had no idea Senator Sweeney was going to be there. So me participating there isn't me giving some seal of approval to Senator Sweeney. I signed up for the delegate assembly as I have every delegate assembly since I've become the delegate and gotten our district more involved in this process. It has nothing to do with Senator Sweeney being there, but there's a, there's a, you know, I'll scratch your back, you scratch mine kind of thing going on here that I'm not terribly excited about, so, and yes, I said it, so. So, so there's that. Okay, so if nobody has anything else on any of the finance items, we will move on to personnel with Ms. Judy Pietravano.
We did have a meeting, not a very long one. It was mostly discussing items on our agenda. So I will go through that, but I do want to highlight one item that is in the bigger packet, which is a job description for the type, for the job family-school liaison. It's a stipend position that I believe we've talked about at the board table before. And so it is in your packet, take a look at it before the next board meeting. And basically, for anyone listening, this stipend position would be a family-school liaison to foster the development relationships between the families and the school. And so that's a really exciting concept and that is on our agenda to approve the job description tonight.
Okay.
So now I will go through the items. So as usual, we have our list of source for teacher subs for 2018-19. We have the approval of Dr. Taylor to be our, on the representative assembly for the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for 2019. Unfortunately, we have a resignation of one of our very talented ESL teachers, Leanne Matthews, effective, it was effective October 30th, making her last day in the district December 21st. We have lost one of our para-job coaches, Arthur Sawyer, and he is also our assistant basketball coach, so we also have a resignation of him as the Schedule B girls assistant basketball coach, oh, and weight room supervisor for the spring session. Number seven is the appointment of our district network and systems specialist, John Gartner. So we have talked about the restructuring we've done with the technology department after Mr. Humphrey's retirement, so number seven is John's appointment to the district, back to the district. Number eight is a resolution to approve a stipend for the administrative secretary, Susan Odato. She's been picking up additional duties. for the administrative secretary, Susan Odato. She's been picking up additional duties, assisting the supervisors of curriculum and instruction. The amount there is, if I'm remembering correctly, her, the stipend will not exceed that amount. So she has an hourly rate. Is that correct, right? And so that's number eight. Let's see. We have a resolution, number nine, resolution to approve a leave replacement para for Irving School, Lynette Chambers. Number 10, we are approving the following staff to teach middle school glow classes, filling in for another teacher temporarily. Number 11 is a change in Schedule B positions for the Bartle Student Council to Jody McLean. 10 is ELL parent night para. Number 13 is Barrow Title I SCL program substitute school psychologist, Ashley Alsas. 14, we're changing dates for employee 0813 from a childcare leave of absence, return date from March 30th to February. 15 is to prove a medical leave, employee 4659 from September until December 31st with return date of January 2nd. Number 16, our assistant principal over at the middle school, Manda Rosenberg, who's been doing a wonderful job. She'll be leaving a little bit earlier because our regular assistant principal is coming back earlier than expected. And getting to the end here. Number 17 is a resolution to prove the Rutgers, I can't pronounce that, Kabrot program, Saudi teachers to be in district Mondays through Thursdays beginning October 29th through February 22nd. These teachers are observing in the district through a Rutgers program. Number 18 is a change in hours for some paras. We have a transfer in a para. Number 19, additional hours for our para, some paras. Number 20, we have a stipend for some paras in 20, number 21. We have the approval for a high school academic coach, Taryn Water. And then, as I mentioned before, the resolution to approve the job description for the family liaison stipend.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Judy.
That wraps it up.
Does anybody have any questions on the personnel items?
Yeah, I have a comment on, and a question on 17. Scott, you provided me with the information that the, these Rutgers Saudi students, teachers are funded by the Saudi Ministry of Education. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in that case, given the current events that we read about in the newspaper every day, including the murder of Jamal Khashoggi by the Saudi government, I cannot possibly support us having Saudi teachers who are funded by the Ministry of Education of the Saudi government in our district. If Rutgers wants to have these teachers in their program and accept the money from the Saudi government, that's their business, although I don't think that's right. But I personally would not support this.
Agreed. I, I personally don't have a, I realize I don't have a coherent policy on when not to support things that bad governments do, including our government. But-
I was asked by somebody-
It certainly seems like, given the murder and the ongoing war in Yemen, it's time to say, time to make some kind of a trivial statement.
I was asked by someone this weekend when I, and the family that I mentioned this to, where do you draw the line?
Right, of course.
So countries come to mind, like at the moment, Myanmar comes to mind. Other, other countries come to mind that are, you know, blatantly doing genocide. If these were individuals who were presenting themselves and not supported by government grants or government money, I would feel completely different. You know, they, they are just people who happen to have been born there. But they are funded by that government and I can't support it. And, and every day in the newspaper are articles commenting on what is our federal government doing about punishing this government? The Russians poisoning people in London. That's another example of the, if we were supporting the, you know, the Russian government sending people, I wouldn't support that either. Someone has to take a stand. You know, you can work from the top down or to the bottom up. We're working from the bottom up. But I think we need to take a stand.
So, so my only question, disagree with anything Mark said. My only question would be to reach out to those three teachers? You know, because I mean, clearly Adam Gold is not an unglobally aware teacher, nor is Kaia. I don't believe I know Ms. Paxton. So just to reach out to those three teachers to see if this was going to be a vital part of their program and if-
Oh, it's not. The Saudi educators are in the classroom now. They're observing. They're simply shadowing them. They're not actually taking part in any activity. So it's not vital to their program. We would have to relocate these teachers somewhere else.
So they're already here?
They did. They're here.
Oh, yeah. I see. It's October 29th.
We would have to relocate them. Now, keep in mind that this agreement was made before any of the politics came to light. This happened back in the summer. I do want to say one thing, that, you know, we do work closely with China. We work closely with some organizations that might be connected to nations that, whose politics we don't agree with. And are obviously who encroach on people's civil rights and whatnot. And yet we have not applied the same standard in those cases. So I think whatever we do here, we need to be looking at on a broader scale. And that might mean cutting our ties with China.
Well, one thing that would help is that we, you know, as a board, were able to discuss this before any students were placed into classrooms.
Well, to be frank with you, I had no, but again, prior to the incident that Mark described, there were no known issues as far as I was concerned.
I'm not faulting anything the district did in any, anyway, or these people.
No.
And I think we as a board, as elected officials, can take a stand literally on a case by case basis. If we believe as a board that some other country is, and that's why I named some other countries, if we believe that those countries are doing things that we consider unacceptable, I think we can take a stand again towards the government, towards the Ministry of Education or the Ministry of whatever who's funding the program. I think, I think this is a, to me at least, very clear. And I would say again, I named a couple of others. We could name others. But certainly this is the case in front of us now. And that's the case that we need to vote yes or no on.
But in this case, when we're talking about educators from another, from Saudi Arabia here to learn best practices and learn English language from here and bring that back to wherever they're going next, is, is this sort of the reverse where we are in the position, even though the, where we're looking at the money that's funding them to be able to come here? I understand the hesitancy. You know, when I, when I saw Saudi, my first reaction was like, oh no, what are we doing?
Right.
But in, in respect to the teachers learning from America or from our district and then bringing it to somewhere else, it almost seems like that is money well spent in some ways.
I feel like that's, that's an inherent tension in any sort of boycott type activity. You know, we boycott the grape farmer, you know, grapes from California. That hurts the workers. It also hurts management. You know, so that's not going to be resolved tonight, I don't think. I think people will have to sort of think about where they fall. I thought the same thing. Like, don't we want to sort of spread, you know, America's dubious claims to, you know, democracy and freedom to the Saudis? Of course, you know, we do. But, I mean, for me, it just doesn't feel comfortable doing this. And I, I agree with Scott, certainly, that we have not been consistent. This will be the first time we've made a decision like this. And-
We don't get presented with a lot of things like that.
Well, we have China, there's two.
Something is so, something has become so blatant and high profile in the news.
I mean, right. And the new attention to the war in Yemen, which I for one was not paying much attention to previously, you know, that Khashoggi murder has sort of brought that back into the national spotlight. I, I don't feel comfortable with this.
But I, Rob, I had exactly the same thought.
Yeah.
You know, when, when I said, this is not okay. I said, but they're learning, they're learning from us and this is good. But I think if, if it, if it were to happen everywhere from the top down and, and, and our people in elected office would take the stand that this is unacceptable and we're taking concrete actions against it, that might make a difference in that country and in that government. And that their behavior would change. And that's what we're talking about. Their behavior changing somewhat as some of the sanctions against Russia that have been put into effect have caused some of their actions perhaps to change. I, I don't know that that's done much that we can see.
While also harming some of the, you know, the citizens.
Yes.
We acknowledge that, right?
And it does. But again, I, I think that you have to start somewhere. I think that's what I'm, I'm saying. You have to start somewhere. And I don't like, I don't like that we're not going to help these people. But I also don't like much, much more what their government is standing for now.
So I think the conundrum now is we're not scheduled to vote on this until next week. The folks are already here. I, I don't know.
Could I, someone?
So there are 22 Saudis.
Hold on. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Avery.
Yeah. I'd like to say I do agree with Mr.-
Russ Levich.
That guy over there.
I was gonna say, Rob. I've personally met one of the Saudi teachers and I have to say I was definitely surprised when I heard that he was from Saudi Arabia. But I think, you know, we talked and it was actually really enlightening to be able to hear what school is like in Saudi Arabia and what kind of differences exist. And I think that's one of the things with that, you just don't, that doesn't happen normally. And it's such a really cool opportunity. And yes, there might be some hesitancies that we might have with the Saudi government. But in truth, it's not as if they're imposing any of their beliefs on us. They're not doing anything by sending their teachers here to be in any way affecting our school. If anything, we're affecting them. We're going to be affecting the way they teach. We're going to be giving them information on how American schools function. So I think this is a good opportunity. And it might be, you know, new territory, but I think it's something we should explore.
My, my daughter had the same argument when I, when I talked to her about it. I would hope that these people who I believe are almost certainly very well-minded and care about their students and want to learn from us would go home, they would have a, a thought that someone here cares about their government doing this to their people. And that someone in America has taken a stand that they've done this to, not only to their government, but to their neighbors in Yemen. And they, they would appreciate it and remember it. And who knows, in their generation or the next, somebody might, who, who learned that or heard it or believed it, might look at our government and our constitution and say, this made a difference to me and I'm going to do something about it here. But I, I think this is a teaching, a learning experience for them to, to know that someone here would make a stand.
But it's, it's experienced with a loss. I mean, I hear you saying it's a loss for students. I mean, that's true. That's, that's one of the losses that comes along with something like a boycott. And I, I hear what you're saying. And I certainly would regret that. Not enough to vote yes, but-
And I regret it as well.
So just because, I don't feel like, just because they come from like a nation that we're not comfortable with, like that has human rights abuses and all that stuff, that we should just not let them like sort of expand their horizons and sort of like be able to learn from us? Because like, I'm a Chinese citizen. I'm not a US citizen. So does that mean I shouldn't be in this school because China has like different human rights abuses? Should I be kicked out?
No.
I don't think so, right? So I feel like it's important to like be able to have them here, be able to have them share their experiences or even just be a silent shadow, just to give them this chance to like be in America, to be able to understand what America's about, to be able to sort of learn.
That's why we initially welcomed them.
They are gonna, but they're gonna go to another district. There's, as Scott was about to say, 22 teachers from Saudi Arabia here. They're gonna go to another district and they're gonna learn just as well. They're not gonna learn here.
Should I be kicked to another district? Should I just be kicked out of Highland Park also because I'm a Chinese citizen?
Because I'm a Chinese citizen-
No, I'm sorry. This is about our endorsement of a Saudi government program. This is not about our endorsement of you and where you come from. If this was just Saudi citizens coming here to learn, that'd be wonderful. I mean, you know, I think Highland Park has traditionally been pretty welcoming of international students, as we certainly are of you and our Chinese students that we have in the school. This is about our endorsement of a Saudi government program. It's a government, it's a government program. It's not these teachers. That's the differentiation.
I mean, to, to your point though, what if the students, what if a student in our high school were also funded by the Saudi government? And let's say-
Why would a student be funded by a government?
Well, the same way he's, he's here from China.
Well, we don't know why. We don't know what his funding is. We shouldn't discuss-
Well, I'm just saying, if, if there is such a situation and, and-
There would never be such a situation. That's just a bizarre hypothetical. I mean, this is talking about-
What makes it bizarre?
Because students aren't funded by foreign governments.
Well, there could be a student who's, I mean, there could be a student who is like, you know, a university student.
An exchange student.
Yeah, an exchange student. But-
Exactly.
But can we deal with that when we get to it? I, I agree that this, we don't have like a, I don't have a philosophy that makes all of this consistent. And I don't think we're going to get that tonight.
Neither do I.
But this is a situation that we have here now. It doesn't mean we're not welcoming students who are coming to our school, whether because our families are here, they decide to come here for some reason or whatever. That's wonderful.
That's actually a hallmark of this community.
That's what we love. We love international students. We don't love the Saudi Ministry of Education. So I, I think, I mean, I would hope the administration, if we vote no on this, I'm sure the administration would be very-
Well, that's the conundrum that I'm figuring out is that we're not voting on this tonight.
No, I know. I understand.
The teachers are already in the building and have been for a couple of weeks.
Before this incident, I wouldn't have thought, and I don't know if the board would have thought twice about having them here. I don't think. But since the incident, obviously things have changed and now we have a different situation to discuss. What would you, I asked the board, what would it have done if we had approved these folks?
Well, so far the board hasn't done anything. We've had, we have a few board members who are expressing concerns. That's my question actually now to Linda, is we're not set to vote on this until next week. Can we, I mean, we can't, we can't take any action tonight. We can't take a vote or a straw poll or anything. So we're kind of stuck.
So it's a rhetorical question.
I don't care, I don't care if, when this, when this happens. It's not about them being in the classroom. It's about making a statement to the Saudi government about our perspective.
Okay. So next week we will have a vote and we'll see what happens. We have a vote. The board hasn't done anything at this juncture.
Can you explain the background of this program a little bit more?
Right.
Or could you just get us a little bit more information about the program and have maybe the Rutgers folks send us some information?
Dr. Mary Curran. Mary Curran is the one who's responsible for the program. There are 22 Saudis who are, I'm just going to share this with you now, then I'll provide other information by email. 22 Saudi educators were placed in six school districts. There are six school districts, including ours, that are part of the partnership that we've talked about for a couple of years now with the Graduate School of Education.
In New Jersey or around the?
Just here in New Jersey. Six districts, Franklin Township, Brunswick, Neptune Township. I forgot the others. But my rhetorical question to consider is, had this resolution been on the board agenda for September and we had approved them to be here and then the incident occurred, would your thinking be any different? Would we, or would you still consider making a statement after the fact? I don't know if that will play into your decision-making at all. I just want you to consider that.
I for one would consider it. I don't know, unless breaking the contract with them, unless there was a contract with them that we would have to break and that would-
I mean, and the board is also in a particularly bizarre position because they're here and we never approved it. So I mean-
Right. So what capacity are they here now in? Just as observers, as you said, so they're not, right. So they're not in an actual contract. I would just lend my voice to the, I, I couldn't conscientiously vote in agreement for this at this point. I mean, it's basically like supporting a government who clearly has blood on their hands. And so I, I know I wouldn't be able to support this.
It's tough because of course we support the war in Yemen too, which is a horrible thing. So this is not a-
Oh, I know.
This is not a statement made by perfectly consistent people here, right?
No, it's not.
It's not. It's to do something rather than nothing.
Even we have refused, even our federal government has refused, has refused to, to, refuel the Saudi planes in the air because somebody in our government has enough, in our- planes in the air, because somebody in our government has enough sense, in our federal government, has enough sense to put a very small line on this.
Okay. So we'll get a little bit more information in the ensuing week, and then we'll see how things fall a week from now when we vote on this.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions on any of the other finance items? Or I'm sorry, personnel items?
Really, I'm a little bit here in the world, I'm sure.
No.
So good business.
No?
I think there are some other questions.
The pair of monitoring, I want to make sure we're... All right. So if nobody has any other concerns about any of the finance items, we'll move on to policies and regulations, Ann.
All right. Great. This should be quick. We met on October 29th, and we went over the list of policies that are obviously in need of, that are conspicuously in need of updating. Number two is the Policies for First Reading. These are ones, let me see, let me just get them in order. The Affirmative Action Program. So this is a very important one. It's about educational equity. We made some changes to it. Most of the changes here were suggested by Strauss Esme, and it's things like including gender identity or expression for the first time. Or I guess, I'm sorry, replacing the word transgender with gender identity or expression. What else did we, did we make other changes? I thought we made changes to talk about heterogeneous classrooms, but perhaps we didn't. Well, in any case, this is for first reading, 1140. Look it over. Send me an email. Send somebody an email if you have concerns. 1523, the Comprehensive Equity Plan. I was going to be more organized this time. Okay. Oh, wait, this is the one we made changes to. Okay, 1523. A lot of the changes here are recommended by Strauss Esme. So, for example, the second paragraph, the board's obligation to be accountable for the requirements, rah 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 rah. That's Strauss Esme. It's to get us in compliance with the law. We added some stuff, for example, in paragraph numbered one, about trying to include a more diverse range of students in our honors and advanced placement programs. So that's our contribution. Other changes are pretty trivial, replacing core curriculum content standards with state standards. But the heterogeneous classrooms thing is, of course, more interesting, and people should check that out. 1550, this is equal employment antidiscrimination practices formerly affirmative action program. This is what it says it is. It's overcoming the effect of historical discrimination in school district employment, and it constrains us from entering into contracts with discriminatory organizations, as we may have just discussed. It would not apply to the Saudi government student observer program.
Okay.
But it certainly touches on an issue we just discussed. Okay, 5330.01, recommended by Strauss Esme. It's about the administration of medical marijuana. It's a new policy, and basically, it states the law. The school will allow people to, will allow, it's kind of strange, actually. We went with Strauss Esme's recommendation.
It's a very weirdly worded policy.
But we felt, you know, we did sort of a cost-benefit analysis of how much we wanted to get into the language, and we decided...
Not worth it.
It looks fine. Right. A parent can come to school and administer medical marijuana to their child, assuming there's an appropriate prescription, and the parent has gotten the legal approval from such and such and such and such.
So does it mean the nurse can't?
I believe it means only the parent.
So only the parent?
Only the parent.
That's what it says.
So the school is not involved in handing out medical marijuana.
Right.
A parent would have to come to school, give the 18-year-old his pill, and, you know, and proceed from there.
That's really interesting.
So...
Probably not an 18-year-old.
Well, 16-year-old, right. An 18-year-old, I suppose, could do it himself. I don't know. It doesn't actually say that.
No, no.
Doesn't say adult students.
Because it's got to be the caregiver, right?
The caregiver of the...
And I don't know that the caregiver can be the adult student.
Student himself. Nonetheless, we decided to skip over that interesting, but ultimately not likely to arise on many occasions, issue, and recommend approving it. I mean, if people have suggestions, if people want to take the time to go through this and make it more coherent, I certainly would welcome that. It's kind of ridiculous.
It's one of the clunkier...
It's one of the clunkier ones. It certainly didn't need one, two, three, four, five paragraphs. So, there it is. Of course, if people have objections to it, I don't, oh, it says mandatory. I guess it's mandatory, yeah. I don't think all the language is mandatory, but it's mandatory that we allow parents to do it upon complying with eight million different regulations.
Yeah, and I don't think any of the language clunkiness would change the meaning of it. It's just, it's just a weirdly written one.
Yes.
Whatever.
Yes. Okay, 5350, student suicide prevention. Although that sounds like a very interesting and worthwhile regulation, the changes are mostly sort of logistical, clerical, yada, yada, yada. Oh, Scott, Scott made some great changes here, actually. He, the second paragraph refers to intervention by child study team when a child exhibits warning signs of suicide. Scott added to that, "Or the intervention could also be by a suicide intervention team appointed by the superintendent or designee." Did you want to speak about what that was?
We have other qualified counselors to make these assessments outside of just the child study team.
So that's a valuable addition from the administration that Strauss Esme did not come up with. Let's see. I don't think...
That was the most significant change.
There was anything else. Wait a minute, let me just see this here. You know what? The final paragraph on the page refers to "Any school, district, staff member, volunteer or intern who has reason to believe that a student has attempted or completed suicide shall report it to the principal or designee."
Or completed.
Has a, well, reason to believe they've completed suicide, I suppose you definitely should report it, because it would be a horrible tragedy in the entire school community, you would probably be aware of it. And perhaps that language is not what we want it to be. But if you, if a school district employee learns that a student has attempted suicide, let's start with that, it's to be reported up the chain. That's to be reported online to what used to be called DIFIS, which is now called Division of Child, Department of, oh, I'm sorry. What used to be called DIFIS, and it now is referred to as the Division of Child Protection and Permanency, or the, just the Department of Children and Families. I'd like to just look before the next meeting and see if that is a statute, that DIFIS has to be notified when something like that happens, as opposed to the children's parents and a, you know, a hospitalization program and such interventions as the parents may be able to employ on their own. Okay, there we go. Next one is, oh, that's it? Okay.
So you're going to check that before next week?
I'm going to check that, yes. Let me make a note to myself, because it doesn't fly right out of my head. Check whether...
Because that is an important distinction, what we are legally obligated to do in those circumstances.
I certainly, if that happened to my child, I wouldn't want DIFIS informed. But, you know, if it's the law, then I guess I would have no choice. Okay, second reading, we've talked about these many a time. 5750, equal education opportunity. There are no changes from the first reading versions. 7510, same thing. That's use of school facilities. 8462, same thing. So your comments are welcome, but there are no sort of interesting changes since the last time. And that's all I have.
So I think on 5750, that was the one that we were talking about adding in health?
Oh, boy. Did we, maybe there was an interesting change that I forgot about. Let's see.
Yeah, because we have, we were thinking that was a good place to insert language to try to, you know, clarify that our goal for health and sex education classes would be that students were together in...
Oh, the coed thing. Right, 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 right. We did talk about this. Did we not actually?
We did. I didn't know we were going to put it in policy, but that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll take a look at it and see if I can...
Is that something you want to take care of?
Well, I mean, yeah, because it says courses of study, including physical education. So it seems like you could just very easily just say, "Courses of study, including physical education," and...
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Coed, health, including phys ed and health.
And then we have policy to fall back on.
Exactly. I believe I'm correct. Let me just check 7510. I think I'm remembering correctly that there is nothing interesting change. That's use of school facilities. There's nothing there. Yeah, there is nothing there, except that we have to, people who use our facilities have to name us as an additional insured, at Strauss Esme's recommendation. Missing or potentially missing or abused children. I believe the only changes there were of a sort of logistical, clerical nature, and proposed by Strauss Esme. All right, of course, I, oh, wait, here we go. Yes. You'll notice that the final paragraph is crossed out. I've now forgotten the history of this. It's about, there was a paragraph in here, I think Strauss Esme added it, and then maybe Strauss Esme itself took it out?
I think we took it out because it was covered in the suicide prevention policy.
Okay, oh, so we did take that out.
Yeah, so we didn't need to have it in that one.
So this is not in our current policy, and it won't be in our future policy. The final paragraph shown on the draft about whether employees or volunteers or interns who suspect a child is contemplating suicide, sorry, the struck paragraph says that employees, volunteers, et cetera, who have reason to suspect that a child has contemplated suicide shall report that to DIFIS. We X that out. It's covered in the suicide, suicide prevention policy. And I believe we did not want to require, sort of as a matter of fiat, that whenever a staff member has reason to believe that a child has contemplated suicide, they shall immediately call DIFIS. And the first step should be the parents, you know, seeing what's going on. There is a provision in the suicide prevention policy. I believe, yeah, I think it's, I think it's in that policy, to the effect that if a parent does not follow the recommendations...
You know what I'm going to do? We actually have a member of the community who I know and who has worked with us to bring the Sources of Strength Program to the high school, which is, which was originally created as a suicide prevention program, but then kind of like built out from there as more kind of community building. I'll show her the two policies, because, I mean, this is her, this is her area of expertise. So she would know what the reporting requirements are. She would know all those things. So if there's, I'll see if she has some suggestions on these for us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Before next week.
All right, cool.
Okay. Anybody have any suggestions or questions or concerns about the policies? Nope? Okay. So we'll move on to equity and excellence. Simone?
Nothing to report. We'll be meeting next week, I think.
Next week before the next meeting?
Yeah, before the next meeting.
Okay, cool. So you have something to report at the next meeting?
I will have something to report.
Fabulous. All right. So that brings us to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. So if anyone has any public comment, you can make your way up to the podium. Please just make sure to state your name and address for the record for the board secretary, and write it down on that piece of paper that's right there.
Robert Katz, 299 B. South 11th Avenue. I was here back in July to address the board with my concerns regarding what I perceived as lack of communication in the middle school. Unfortunately, I'm back here tonight to continue this discussion with the board on both a school and district level. I have a couple of points, so please bear with me. Number one, September, October, I was looking for board agendas on the website and was unable to locate them several times. So please correct me if I'm wrong. Are the agendas being placed on the website in a timely manner?
We certainly thought that they were.
Right. I mean, that's actually, can we, can we get, just have the administration check on that? I guess.
Well, we're up to date at this point. We just have to make sure that we were regularly updating our board agendas.
Is there any chance that it's hard to...
To the website, but we do have a place for them on the web.
Is there a chance that they're, I mean, is there a chance that it's hard to find even where they're supposed to be, or that they're just not there on an updated...
Well, I would put the date in. I would put the month and the year, or the month and the date, and that nothing would come up. Now, I think a lot, the ones I was looking for now are on there now, but they were not when I was looking for it. At one point, I contacted a board member who graciously shared it with me from her files, but it was not online. I also recently emailed the board, sent through the board email, whatever you have, and I was never, I was never responded to with that email regarding this issue.
I will say that we have to revise the website, and we're in the throes of doing that, because we've recognized, I recognize, it takes, takes a little too, few too many clicks to get to something when you're looking for it. I prefer that you have to only click twice, let's say, to get to a board agenda, so we're working on that. I have a meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, actually, with the folks who run the website, so that's on our agenda.
Okay, thank you. My next point is, there seems to be an ongoing pattern of having parental workshops or meetings in the middle of the day. This has happened, this has happened over the last three years that I'm aware of in certain situations for me. This year, the district, the district held the workshop, a parental workshop on the new anti-bullying policy at 3:30 in the afternoon. Last year, the sixth grade incoming parent orientation was originally scheduled for 3:30 in the afternoon, which was then moved to the evening. And when my son was in fifth grade, my son's in seventh grade now, when my son was in fifth grade, the Camp Bernie parent orientation was at 4:30 in the afternoon. So to me, there's a pattern in this district of having workshops in the middle of the afternoon. Now, I don't know how many parents can attend these workshops when most of us are working. I myself am a teacher, so I don't leave school till at, at 3:30, quarter to four. So I wouldn't be able to be here at the early, you know, that early. I'm curious, I emailed Dr. Taylor about the anti-bullying one. Dr. Taylor, you told me you were trying to get a larger turnout by having it early in the afternoon. Can I ask what the turnout was for that anti-bullying?
It was the same as it was in the evening.
Okay. So to me, either, if you want to have something in the afternoon, and it just, you should also have an evening one for parents that can attend in the evening. Maybe it's me being cynical and me being in education, but to me, it just seems that the district is trying to save money by not having to pay the teachers to either come back in the evening or to stay. Because you have it 3:30 in the afternoon, that's right after school, the teachers can, or staff that needs to be here doesn't have to return.
Well, we actually run a good number of workshops in the evening, especially for our Title I and III students. We also run financial aid seminars, for instance, at the high school in the evening. I think there's probably a balance. I can't tell you off the top of my head how many we run in the afternoon, how many in the evening, but I'm sure there are just as many we run in the evening as we do in the afternoon. Money hasn't been a factor, at least not, hasn't come to my attention that that's the Money hasn't been a factor, at least not, hasn't come to my attention that that's the case. I think in some cases, it has to do with just what we feel is the best timing. But we need to obviously consider what you're suggesting and be more mindful that some of these workshops we're running in the afternoon, maybe we should run in the evening.
Okay. Because, I mean, I'm a very impolite parent and I would have, especially the anti-bullying one, and all three of them I mentioned, I would have loved to attend. Well, the two, what I was able to, because it was changed. But the other two I would have, I wanted to attend, but was unable to. I just would hate for it to be going, every year, for this to be happening every year going forward where there are workshops that I would like to attend and I can't because you schedule it at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Fair point.
So. My last point is a personal one. Again, I did email your Dr. Taylor about this issue. My son has special needs and his teacher has personal issues where she had to be put, had to take some kind of a leave. This happened recently. The way I found out about it was when I checked Genesis for, to see how he was, his grades, and I noticed that his teacher's name was removed and three other teachers' names were put in those places because he has that same teacher for three classes. I emailed, I was thinking this was a mistake, you know, a technology mistake. I emailed the middle school secretary and I asked her, I said, this is what I noticed. Please let me know when it's fixed. She emails me back the next day. She says, this wasn't a mistake, it was done administratively. So at this point, I was livid, thinking, okay, did they make a personnel change to my son's program without informing me? So I sent an email to Dr. Taylor, to all the administration, Dr. Taylor, Ms. Budine, Mrs. Deicher, and Mrs. O., with, expressing in strong terms my concern. The response I got back from Mrs. O. was that, explaining to me that this teacher has to be on leave. And they met, this was a last minute notification, and they met Friday, that previous Friday, to discuss what to do. My issue is I should have received, not just me, any, all the parents involved, associated with this teacher should have been informed on Friday that this change was going to be made. I should not have had to be, I should not have found out about it by looking at Genesis. When I questioned the Mrs. O., her response was, oh, that, that the teachers will be informing me, sending, sending me an email on Monday telling me this. Okay, A, again, I shouldn't have had to, I shouldn't be notified of this prior to this taking place. B, in my personal opinion, as an educator, it's not their responsibility to email the parents. That email should have come from the administration. I also sent an email to his case manager, asking him why I wasn't informed on Friday, and he told me that he himself was not informed until Monday. So why my son's case manager was not informed until, prior to this happening is also inexcusable to me. So I would like an explanation, please.
I'm not going to be able to provide you an explanation, except that we have to learn from our experience. I don't disagree with your points. Something we'll learn from and try not to let happen going forward. I don't know what else I could tell you, except that if a mistake was made, we need to make sure we don't make that same mistake in terms of communication. Now, I can't explain to you the circumstances behind why the switch was made. That's a personal.
Well, I mean, I happen to be in touch with that teacher and she explained everything to me, so I know the situation because she spoke to me about it. But, and I have no issue, let me say this straight, I have no issue with who is replacing that teacher. My son either has, my son has had all of them or has them this year also. And we thought, we're very, we have been very pleased with those teachers. So we have no issue with who is being used in the interim. In fact, we're happy about that. But my issue is that, is the lack, again, the lack of notification, that I should not have had to find out by looking at Genesis and saying, oh, a change was made. I should have received the email on Friday, even if you couldn't tell me exactly what was going to be happening, say something has been happening on Friday. See, if something is happening, we're going to be making, we're going to have to make this change, we're working on it, we'll let you know as soon as we, as it's finalized.
Completely understand, and all your points are valid. I mean that generally.
Mr. Katz, I also want to reiterate that all three of your points are, you're like 100% correct. And the first one, I particularly want to apologize to you. The board really does, we pride ourselves on being as open and transparent as possible. We're being live streamed right now. All the videos go right up onto the website as well as onto the YouTube channel. I had no idea until I got your email that those agendas and minutes weren't being posted on the website. So I appreciated you sending that and I apologize that I didn't get back to you. I did go to Scott and to Linda to make sure those all were put up, but I missed that step of the process and that's totally my fault and I apologize to you for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
In terms of the second one, I certainly agree that the evening is far better for parents where we're, or for programs where we're expecting parent participation. So I hope that the different building administrations will, will take that into account moving forward. And on the third one, I absolutely hear your concern. I had the same issue with my daughter, so I, I feel your pain on that one. And yes, certainly the goal would be that all parents are notified of any changes to, to classroom personnel in a more timely and efficient manner.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz, for coming. Okay, so we will move on to my report and I just put a note on there that it would be a good spot for any of us who attended workshop this year to share out anything that we thought was particularly notable or helpful or remarkable. So either of you lovely gentlemen to my left want to wax prophetic for a couple of minutes on anything that you learned?
I mean, for me, it's, I'll keep it short and sweet. I found it useful, you know, it's a great, it's a, it's a very good chance to learn from others in other districts to just stop and shop and listen to the conversations on the floor of the, of the convention in terms of what's out there. I did attend a couple of pretty effective presentations. One was on HIB, which we spend a lot of time on in this district, and that was really fascinating. This was in particular focused on protecting gender equality in schools, also reviewed some case law examples and best practices. So that, you know, goes to what we have been working on and I did share that with the board and with Scott. That presentation came from, actually, our lawyers at, at the Bush Law Group. Also attended a session on Ed foundations and recommendations and learned about some innovative funding that's being done around the state and shared that with our, with the folks at our, at our Ed foundation. So, you know, again, I'll say, it's time away from home, it's time away from work, but I get to spend a little extra time with a couple of folks on the board, learn from each other, so I found it, you know, really worthwhile.
Thank you.
So I attended two very, very interesting curriculum sessions, which I just pulled up on my phone because my computer decided to reboot. One was called Student Learning Not Earning. This is about standards-based grading and, and I was very, very, very impressed and passed that information, including slides, onto a lot of people, I think all of the folks who attended and also to Scott. And hopefully we'll get a review of that. Curriculum is always, as I said earlier, the most interesting, so I tried to attend, especially since we have no negotiations going on now, we're far from the budget. Seemed like an interesting place to go and learn new things. And then there was a second session called Genius Hour, where they have a program in the middle school where people spend, the teachers spend time with the students and they get a chance to spend an hour doing their genius project every day or week or month and come up with interesting output. I think these are mostly eighth graders. And I sent information on that as well. We also had a chance, you know, you have a chance to spend time with other, you're other board members on the Highland Park Board, but I happened into lunch with a group of board members from Weehawken, New Jersey, who are going to somehow have to raise an additional $2 million because their, their mayor and council have done pilot programs. And they are not going to lose the money, but the town, the bulk of the, of the tax abatements will go to the developers and then the borough council will get any of the kind of leftovers and the Board of Education won't get any of it. And they'll be in a position of explaining to the town why, while they are going to get their 2% or 3% or, you know, increase and not lose anything, as Linda pointed out a month ago, we won't lose anything if pilot programs come into, into play. The taxes for everyone else in the town will be, will be subsidizing developers. And where will angry people go? They'll go to the school board to say, why are our taxes going up so much? So they're in much, much, much worse situation than we could ever be and they were really pretty despondent over it. Then we talked and just shared, shared our possible pain. But you learn, you learn that, you know, while we're looking at possibly having that happen, they're looking at really dire consequences in the very near future. Met a lot of other board members, spent time with the, with our attorneys, which was very, very good. And, I don't know, had some nice Japanese food. I'll say that quietly.
So speaking of the pilot piece, one of the sessions that I attended that I always attend when I'm there is the legislative panel. They bring in legislators from around the state to come and talk to school board members and it's always interesting to see who they put in the room. And what was fascinating was this year, there was Senator Sweeney. He is really, he is, he is cozying up to school board members this year to try to advance this agenda that he has on his mind. But it did give me the opportunity, and this is something that we've discussed before, to speak with someone from the, I think she's actually with the Democratic Majority Office. I don't think she's in his office. I think she's in the Democratic Majority Office, but somebody that I've met with before with work that I've done with Saber Schools, New Jersey, but who I recognized and she recognized me and I got to pull her aside and say, you know, I know you know that the Senator and I don't agree on a lot of things, but one thing I do agree with him on right now is the pilot issue and I would like to work with you to.
Great, great.
So, so she seemed receptive to that. I have not had a chance to reach out to her yet, but I will absolutely do that. And I'm assuming I will probably see her again at the teleassembly, so. So that was one of the sessions that I attended. And I think, to me, the session that I came away the most, came away with the most from this year was one that Michelle and I attended about something called the Education Opportunity Fund or EOF. And it actually made me think of that when it came up about the, the idea of cohorts because that was very much kind of the idea behind this program. And this program was more, the gentleman was from Montclair State University and he runs this Education Opportunity Fund program through Montclair State and works primarily with districts like Newark and Camden and Patterson and Trenton to find students who are interested in attending college but may not have the resources, may not have the, you know, don't have the family background, don't have people there to help guide them through that process, and they kind of take over that role. So it's funny, it's called the Education Opportunity Fund, but there's not like a lot of money actually involved. I think the scholarship only ends up being about like $1,500 or something, he said. But what it does include is a six-week program over the summer between senior year and freshman year of intense cohort building with a group of students that they get to learn a lot of those skills that they're going to need to be successful in college and create relationships not only with other students, but with people like this gentleman who run, who runs the program so that they have these additional people in their world that they can turn to to help not only get them to, but through school. So he was able to provide all sorts of, you know, amazing, you know, case examples of students that they've helped get through and clearly at the end that I was like, but what about us? I said, you know, like the frustration is so often we hear about these programs that kids in Newark and Camden and Trenton will qualify for, but we probably have a bunch of students that would be fantastic for a program like this and we never seem to be able to develop those relationships. So he seemed completely open to that. So I've sent his information to Scott and I'm hoping that there's some relationship that we can build there that can help. Even if it gets one of our kids to and through school, I'd consider it, you know, worth the expenditure of going to the, going to workshop. So that was the one that I really came away with the most from. But one other one, really interesting one I wanted to tell you, and Mark also attended this one and as did Michelle, we all ended up in the same program. I, I think a lot because we were concerned that one of the things on, in the description of this one was a kindergarten assessment. And I think that perked all of our ears up, like what? Is the state like going to mandate some like assessment in kindergarten? So.
And we were all there independently.
Yeah, like we all just kind of were like, wait a minute, let's go find out what this is. And then when we got there, the person who was supposed to present on that wasn't there, so that was kind of a bit of a disappointment. But from what I understand, this is not something that's like going to be mandated or coming down the pike anytime soon. But what they were talking about was best practices in early childhood education. And unbeknownst to all of us, the videos that they then put up were videos of all of our teachers. The videos were videos that were created in, two years ago with the Graduate School of Education at Bardell. And so it was just like, we were like, hey, that's us, that's us! So it was like, it was very nice to see us up there on the screen as the example of, you know, how early child education should look. So that was a very, that was a very nice surprise to head into a session that we had great concerns about and then be like, oh, but wait, look, there we are, we're doing something right. So that was, that was really, really nice. Did you want to say something about those?
No, I'm just going to clarify, it's NIEER, N-I-E-E-R, that's the offshoot of Rutgers that work with us.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Excellent. All right, so that's all I've got. Anybody have any questions about workshop or anything? So we don't have anything on the agenda for old business? Anybody have anything they want to?
I have something that I'll, I've alerted you and Scott, I wanted to talk about next, next week under old business, which is the high school schedule and the early start time. And just, just to bring, put it out there, there's been some heat from the, from the Board of Health about the number of students who need to come in for the first early period. And Matutian has been used as an example, but then it turns out my friend on the school board in Matutian says they do exactly the same thing we do. And they have a large number of their students coming in early, but I'd still like to talk about it and, and perhaps talk to Scott about Mike Lassiter's scheduling committee.
I'll put it under new business.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for old business? No? Anybody have anything for new business?
Just, is there any way to move the first public comment up a little bit? I feel so hard when people come and they're here until 9:30 waiting.
Well, I mean.
It's tough because the intent of the public comment is to comment on what we're talking about at the, that evening at the meeting.
Well, there are two of them.
But we have that later. A lot of times people are coming for something totally different.
But yeah, I would support.
The one later is then after we've voted typically.
Yeah.
I mean, and sometimes if I, if there's a bunch of people, I'll move it, but.
Would it be effective to move public comment for the working meetings earlier and then keep it the same for voting?
Then if somebody comes for the voting one, then.
It's confusing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think unless there's like a really heated issue and we've got a ton of people here.
Yeah, we did that once, too.
Yeah, I mean, if it seems like there's something that like, you know, we've got this throng here, but.
Maybe at least people with access to the internet could watch the live stream and come on in. I mean, we are a small town, so some people might be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, my family does that sometimes.
Is there some, question that I have, is there something that says we're limited to? I mean, could we add, could, you know, could we have a, like a, like a quick thoughts kind of a, you know, early one?
Yeah, because generally, we have no one here.
Well, we don't. And for somebody who's come to make two or three comments and go, I mean, I don't know.
But there's no way to gauge that, right? I mean, it's.
Probably not.
We couldn't add a spur of the moment? Extra public comment?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
I feel bad. I agree.
I know, I know.
They don't feel so bad. They get to watch the board in action.
Oh, we're fantastic.
And he's a teacher. He asks you to prepare for tomorrow and get up at 5:30 in the morning.
Okay, well, we don't have any more public here for public comment, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, sorry, I did have one piece for new business.
Get out.
It's coming up, I assume in February, but two things I would like to discuss is whether or not we can move our schedule discussion for the next coming school year earlier in the, our cycle, rather than starting to talk about it in February, March, and April of next year, start to consider it now. Because I've already had people ask me, do you have any idea when school starts in the next school year?
Wow, really?
And then another thing I would want to consider is whether or not we can approve more than just one schedule. I've seen other districts where they approve, you know, like two, three to five years out rather than just the next school year.
Really?
I don't see any problem with moving it a month or two earlier. Not much that I play, that plays into the planning changes. So unless the board has an issue with it, I wouldn't have a problem trying to come to the board in January instead of February.
Yeah, I think the earlier the better. I think some people are definitely planning things a little bit earlier in the year than they're already looking at, hey, what's the school year look like next year?
Okay. Let me take a look at where we usually do it and I'll try to get a month closer.
Unless, sort of checks.
I am not that person.
Long-term planning.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not good at that.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.